Twenty-fifth Selectmen's Meeting.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. This seems to be the Selectmen's Meeting of public hearings. We have four right in a row. So we have at 7:00 PM and right on schedule, in accordance with Chapter 369, Act of 1982, Section 1, Determination, the percentage of the tax levy to be borne by each class of real property for Y-15. Was there a legal notice on this that we have to read, Tracy? Was there? Should Damon read the legal notice? Go ahead, Damon.
Get to the right page or...
No, sorry.
It's in the fact, but not in this one? Okay.
Make sure I get it right.
Let's hope so. In accordance with Chapter 369, Act of 1982, Section 1, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Newbury will hold a public hearing on the determination of the percentage of tax levy to be borne by each class of real property for fiscal year 2015. Hearings to be held on Tuesday, November 25th, 2014, at 7:00 PM at the Newbury Town Hall.
It's all yours, Michelle.
Thank you. Michelle Bransofordi, Principal Assessor. The purpose of the classification hearing is for the Board of Selectmen to determine the allocation of the local property tax to be borne by the four classes of real property and the fifth class, which is personal property, for fiscal year 2015. In deciding the allocation, the Selectmen must adopt a residential factor. The residential factor is used to determine the percentage of tax levy that is applied to each class of real and personal property. The Board of Assessors applies these percentages to the individual property classes according to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 56. It is the responsibility of the assessors to provide the Selectmen with relevant information and to discuss the fiscal effects of possible alternatives. The total assessed values for fiscal year 2015 are split up into five different classes. Class one is residential. Class two is open space. Class three is commercial. Class four is industrial. Class five is personal property. Some salient facts about fiscal year 2015. Interim year adjustments. Per the Department of Revenue's guidelines, the assessing cycle requires that all parcels in Newbury exempt and taxable be visited every seven years. Values are to be determined every year. The Department of Revenue recertifies values and audits the operations of the Assessor's Office every three years. Fiscal year 2014, so last year, was the triennial recertification year. Changes to valuation tables in the years in between recertification years are called interim years. So fiscal year 2015 is an interim year. New growth. The new growth due to construction in the single-family home sector decreased from last year. The commercial, industrial, and personal property new growth decreased over last year due to a decrease in personal property accounts, decreased value of utilities, and no construction in the commercial area. Below, there's a little bit more information. Ninety percent of our new growth for this year came from residential sector and 10% from commercial, industrial, and personal property. And the new growth for fiscal 2015 was 104,392. I put a little history below that so you can see dating back to 2007 what the new growth has been like. The total taxable value for the town for fiscal year 2015 Open, residential, open space, that portion is 95.57% of this taxable value. And commercial, industrial, and personal property is 4.43%. The tax levy, the tax levy for fiscal year 2014, the levy limit was $13,212,626. We have amended new growth of $8,066. Two and a half percent allowed increase, new growth from the LA-13 of 104,392. If you turn to the following page, Page 5, the maximum permitted levy for fiscal '15 is $14,460,353. And the fiscal '15 property tax levy is $14,450,334.86 with an unused levy limit, also known as excess levy capacity, of $10,018.14. The tax rate is the tax levy divided by the town's taxable valuation. This is known as a uniform tax rate. Under this rate, each class of property pays a share of the tax levy equal to its share of the town's total value. The tax rate used in this report is fiscal year 2014 tax rate of $11.32 per thousand. And that's because the fiscal '15 tax rate is pending the Department of Revenue's approval. So I did not use that new tax rate. The residential factor. The residential factor adopted by a community governs the percentage of the tax levy that is to be paid by the residential property owners. A residential factor of one will result in the taxation of all property at the same rate, a single rate, uniform tax rate. However, the law allows the commercial, industrial, personal property tax rate for the Town of Newbury to be as high as 50% above the uniform rate and the residential open space to be as low as 65% of the uniform rate. Historically, Newbury has always maintained a single tax rate. Shifting the tax onto the commercial, industrial, and personal properties would create a tax burden for those properties while the residential properties would only benefit from a small savings. Residential exemption. The Board of Selectmen may adopt an exemption of up to 20% to shift the residential class tax burden from lower assessed properties that are the principal residents of a taxpayer to higher assessed properties and properties that are not the principal residents of a taxpayer. Scenario of the shift as follows. So I gave an example. Fiscal year 2015, single-family home assessed value is $421,347. At the tax of $11.32 per thousand, those yearly taxes are $4,769.65. With the 20% exemption, the new assessed value, the average assessed value, becomes $342,454. But the tax rate shifts to $14.15, making the yearly taxes $4,845.72, which is actually $76 higher than the properties with no exemption. Therefore, the Board of Assessors has consistently recommended that a residential exemption not be adopted. It places an unjustified additional burden to the other residences. So if the Selectmen could take a vote as to where we would like to go with this exemption.
Michelle, is that something that you would like us to do right now?
If you could take that vote, that would be great. And then I'll continue.
I would entertain a motion from the Board on what they feel they would like to do with the question about the exemption that the Board of Assessors has consistently recommended. What would you guys like to do?
I move that we follow the recommendation of the Board of Assessors.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead.
Small commercial exemption. This is similar to the residential exemption above. Most of the commercial class would qualify for this exemption. However, the shift has the same effect as the residential example above. The Board of Assessors has consistently recommended that a small commercial exemption not be adopted. It places an unjustified additional burden to the other commercial properties. If you could take a vote on that as well.
Just as we did with the above, the Board of Assessors has consistently recommended that a small commercial exemption not be adopted. What would the Board like to do? I'll entertain a motion.
Move on their recommendation.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Classification. The Board of Selectmen may shift the town's tax burden from the residential class to the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes as long as the shift does not exceed the maximum residential factor. This means the burden cannot be shifted more than 50%. The following page contains information on the impact of any shift of the tax burden. So if you could turn to Page 7 for just a minute. The top of the spreadsheet shows as the shift of the residential tax rate goes down, the impact on the commercial, industrial, and personal property becomes larger. The bottom part of this spreadsheet actually shows if you take that same average, single-family home, assessed at $421,347. If you shift that residential rate by 50%, so you go over to the column that shows rate 150%, that new rate becomes $11.06. That would save the average family $111 per year. However, if you make that shift and you move down to commercial, industrial, and personal property, the rate moves from $11.32 to $16.98. Therefore, all of these businesses would end up paying $2,385 more per year, which is a huge impact on the businesses in town. The Board of Assessors is unanimous in its recommendation to retain the uniform tax rate for fiscal year 2015 with a residential factor of one, which would mean a single rate throughout the town for residential, commercial, open space, personal property. Selectmen should sign the LA-5. If you would like to vote so. Actually, we should do the vote first.
Once again, just for clarification of anyone in the audience and on TV, the Board of Assessors is unanimous in its recommendation to retain the uniform tax rate for fiscal year 2015 with a residential factor of one. I would entertain a motion as Michelle has asked.
Motion to adopt Assessors' recommendations.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you ever so much for your...
Thank you. If you could sign the LA-5 and vote to allow...
Sorry.
That's okay. If you could allow authorization for Tracy Blaze to sign the LA-5 on the Department of Revenue's gateway system, that would be great.
Now, would you like a vote on that?
Yep.
And we also would also entertain a vote from the Board for the LA-5 and a vote to allow the authorization of the town administrator, Tracy Blaze, to sign the LA-5 on the DOR gateway system on their behalf, on our behalf. So I'm looking for a vote or a motion for that, guys.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
So it's just you doing it rather than us doing it?
Well, you have to sign this, but I have to get on the gateway program, the electronic program to DOR.
I don't see any reason why that wouldn't be nice.
Unless you got a little extra time.
We do this each year.
Thank you.
And a vote on that is, obviously?
Unanimous.
Unanimous. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, everyone else. Bud, everyone.
You've fitted in the allotted time to boot. You're good.
Now, moving right along at 7:15. National Grid, you ready? The first one is, and I think you've got to... Why don't you just... Yep, go ahead, read it.
A public hearing will be held on Tuesday, November 25th, 2014, at 7:15 at the Newbury Town Hall, 25 High Road, Newbury, Mass, on the petition of National Grid Plan 17026891, dated 10/22/14, to install approximately 14 feet plus or minus UG secondary wire in customer install, two-to-three-inch concrete in case conduits crossing Smith Street from existing pole 20-1 to JJ-1 to provide service to Lot 11.
Now, do me a favor, guys. We've got quite a bit of support and documentation for some of the things that you're going to talk about tonight, but if you can kind of explain it to the audience and television. Maybe explain where it is and...
It's located at the... Well, first of all, my name is Carlos. Good evening.
How are you?
It's located at Lot 11 on Smith Street, which is cornered to Old Point Road. And at the customer's request, to install a handhole about 14 feet from the existing pole 20-1 to serve the customer underground.
So basically, it's cable going underground instead of another pole being put in?
Correct.
So it's pretty simplistic, I guess, in that respect. So... Go ahead. Anything else that you would have?
Just crossing the road.
Okay. You're looking for us to allow you to cross the road?
This would be the customer. We are, we will be there to supervise the job.
Okay. Is it going under the road or is it a cut? How's it being done?
I believe they're digging up the road. They're putting on conduit to the handhole. Then it's going to be, we'll be installing the wire.
And the surface of Smith Street is pavement or is it dirt?
It's pavement.
Pavement. All right. So I think being, this is something that has been done and does get done quite a bit. Any questions? Well, let's entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Now, any questions for National Grid while he's there?
Is there a reason that above ground is inappropriate in a site?
This is just because the customer requested it.
Okay.
Is the customer going to be responsible for making sure the hot top is back right also? Or is that yawn you?
No, that would be the customer.
Is the customer here tonight? Okay. Any other questions, guys?
That's my only major concern on that.
And you know what, Chuck? It's a good, you know, my sense in the discussion would be, where do we have the ability to regulate, you know, that the pavement is fixed correctly? Would you, Tracy, any idea or anyone know?
I don't know. I don't know authorities.
Highway Survey would be in charge of that.
All right. What was the pleasure of... The motion could also contain some sign of language that we would expect everything to be fixed according to standards that Timmy would expect or something like that, too.
Yeah. I share the concern about the road not being put back properly. But... So we made a motion to approve it. Do we, would we add an amendment at this point? Or how would we go about that?
What usually happens in a case like this, guys? Because you must do them all the time, especially on per mile. And go ahead.
I was going to say, because usually you're the one that's in charge of the digging.
My name's John Butler. I've been at this a little while. Carlos is here. He's new with our group and he'll be at some point taking over the duties. It changes from town to town and city to city as far as road opening is concerned. But in this particular matter, the customer doesn't want overhead service on his building. And especially when it comes to the aisle and the less wire and poles available. So he pays 100% for this work and everything rather than a free overhead service on his building. It's totally his responsibility to install it all to our specifications. We have an inspector on site. However, all of the restoration to the road and whatever has to be done is on him. In most communities, road opening permits are required. That's all the customer's responsibility. I don't know whether the highway department here or not requires them. I would think they would.
We do.
And generally, after a certain time of year, if the roads are asphalt, they don't allow them to be opened until spring.
So...
But again, these things might change a little bit from community to community. But the permit that they get to open the road, then I would assume highway inspectors takes responsibility to make sure it's all put back. Permit costs and all of that and what they make them do to have it provisioned now and then.
No, thank you. Did Damon have a question? And I anticipate what it's going to be. Go ahead.
Well, I just, if they are required to have a road opening permit, that means the road issue is taken care of separate from this approval. So we can approve this and they still have to get the permit. The season, they can't dig up the road. So they can have this approval without being able to do anything with it.
Yep.
Unless Timmy gives them permission.
Or you could make a motion that this approval on, you know, road permits and everything, they need to do the job. So... Because we don't have a permit yet, right? There's no permit yet.
No, if they haven't.
No, you wouldn't have a request for a permit till they had permission.
Till this is approved.
We get this first. But...
Yeah, right.
And then they gotta...
Get the ground opening permit or they're breaking the rule. And it'll be obvious because the road will have a big hole in it.
Well... Okay.
So...
If that's the way, I can...
Most towns don't offer them until spring, after Thanksgiving. But those rules might change from time to time.
Would you be more comfortable if we...
You know what it is? It's after we okay this, hopefully, you know, they're going to Timmy. We don't see him again.
Yeah.
So this just seems a lot to me.
That's his job. That's his responsibility. And I entrust that to him, so...
All right.
Okay.
Go ahead. Where do we stand in the motion?
I think we take a vote.
All right.
We've moved it already.
Discussion done?
Yep. I'm done.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
One down. Thank you for the clarification on that.
Excuse me. May I have your last names, please?
John Butler.
Butler, okay. Carlos?
Bailey. Bailey?
B-L-L-E.
It's a Y.
V as in Victor, A-L-L-E.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Ready for another one? Is there another legal notice?
I shouldn't ask this one?
Is there another notice?
Yes.
Trace, I mean, Martha.
This one.
Yep, there it is. Just a little longer. No, it isn't. Is it this?
Well, do we need to read that letter?
No.
Yeah, that's the same, that's the letter about that notice. So, "A public hearing will be held on November, on Tuesday, November 25th, 2014, at 7:15 at the Newbury Town Hall, 25 High Road, Newbury, Mass, on petition of National Grid in Verizon, New England Plan Number 16260601, dated 10/6/14, to relocate pole P4, a distance of approximately 12 feet north to the property line between 7 and 9, South Pond Street, at the request of the resident of 7 South Pond Street."
So as you mentioned, we're relocating a pole also at request from the customer. It's going over 12 feet just so they can have better access to their driveway.
And everything's going to be done by you guys?
Yes.
The letter seems to, that is included in the document, seems to really lay it out. You know, we are moving the pole approximately 12 feet north to the property line between 7th Pond Street and 9, as Damon read, in the intersection of Kingsford Street and containing approximately nine feet in the west direction, location approximately shown. So I'd entertain a motion. It seems fine.
Yeah. Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I'm Griddy.
Good ol' it.
Moving right...
Jeff, one more issue you wanted to bring up.
I had a, I hand carried a petition.
Oh, this is different. This, I don't have this yet.
I hand carried a petition tonight that's not, that's not scheduled.
Yeah, okay. My, going right along. I've had it.
And I brought it with me tonight since, actually, really looking for advice with the Board on how to handle it. It's a little unusual. It's not something that usually comes up. So the petition's prepared as normal. We had an attachee run wires through town, Bay Ring Corporation, a communications company, and they attached to all our existing poles.
When was that? Two, three, four years ago or is it longer?
No, it's, would have been in, yeah, within the last two or three.
I think I can remember that, yeah.
And when they got to Old Raleigh Road, there were two poles missing to get them into the town of Raleigh. I have no idea why. The company chose not to set them and they allowed them to petition for the poles and set their own. So...
What company? Which company?
Bay Ring Corporation Communications.
Yep.
I couldn't find copies of their petitions here yet. I did find petitions for one of the poles they set because it didn't come through us. It came through you folks. But there should be a petition on record for the two poles Bay Ring set at the very end of Old Raleigh Road. My problem is I now have a new home at the end of Old Raleigh Road that I have to serve. And I need to take ownership of those poles so I can put larger ones in and have my equipment on it. Existing poles aren't tall enough. And we don't attach to other people's poles. We have to have legal rights and own the poles ourselves. So the petition is not actually to install poles. It's to replace them and for us to take ownership and responsibility for them going forward. And it's, this hasn't come up in the time I've been on the job. This isn't something that comes up that often. So as far as whether you folks want to hear it or re-advertise it or consider it, take a look at it and consider it and schedule it at another time, we're just looking for your input on it at this point.
We definitely have to look and see if we can find records anyway. But question, have you heard any communication at all with Bay Ring?
Oh, yeah. But that, yeah, that's a separate, entirely separate agreement. Oh, yeah, but that, yeah, that's a separate, entirely separate agreement. We have to make agreement with them, take, we're gonna have to pay them, there's.
I mean, does it seem like it's gonna be a smooth agreement, or is it? I mean, do we have to have our ducks in a row to grant you anything, or does it seem like it's moving smoothly forward?
Uh, again, it's not something that happens internally that often either.
Okay.
And, and it's, it's handled by an entirely different group. It's not handled locally out of the local office. Because it's a large contract, that third party, what we call a third party attachment on all the other poles. They're paying rent to us and the phone company, because we're the owners of the poles. In this case, how much we're gonna have to pay them to renegotiate this uh, is out of my league and off my, uh, we, out of my responsibility. But in some discussion with, with the wire inspector here, he didn't recommend another set of poles on the other side of the road for us to serve this customer, and I didn't think the town would. That would be appropriate myself. So it's up to us to negotiate with them. I can't answer the question of whether they, whether they have something to say to you folks about giving us ownership. I think that's where you're going with it, maybe.
Well, you know, I was just wondering how far along your communication with Bay Ring would be, because that seems like it's gonna be important to how we proceed, but we're gonna have to.
That'd be pretty soon, because the customer that wants electricity is not too happy. This has been going on for quite a while.
I mean, we need.
New home at sixty-seven.
I'm gonna ask, uh, you know, before we make a motion or anything, we'll just add to some discussion. What does the board think about what information we might need, and just hypothetically, what steps would seem something, um, appropriate?
Well, I think we certainly have to hear from Bay Ring, because we can't, I mean, we could seize their property and turn it over to National Grid, but I think that's going pretty extreme without communication from them.
Isn't this something that, uh, National Grid and Raleigh would, uh, negotiate?
Well, I mean, I think it could be, Michael. I think John's pretty sharp at this, and he's telling us quite a bit, but like he keeps saying, it's not something that occurs every day.
Exactly. If, 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 if the town needs a copy of the agreement between Bay Ring and National Grid, then that could be produced.
And I think we ought to try to find, you know, the petition that supposedly we gave to Bay Ring, and somewhere in the back of my mind, I think I remember something. Joe's here. Do we remember something two, three, four years ago, or something?
Well, they came for here and for up back here and up on the.
And that's the one I remember.
Remember?
Okay.
Because they had to bypass, because your, your poles out here were at full capacity, so they bypassed the center here.
They sent one around the corner here, all back, and those records, she made, she found those records for me, but the other one.
See, that's, that's the one that's sticking in my mind. I think we're gonna need to have more information. We're gonna need maybe a little something from town council, so. Alan, I mean, I think we're gonna have to most likely table this and look at the petition and move forward too, so, but if the board's ready for that kind of a motion, or whatever they would like, if you want more discussion, more questions to John, you can ask it now, too.
Very hard to make a motion when you don't even know what the amendments are gonna be, so.
So definitely.
I, I think we ought to do our homework.
Yep, so a motion to.
Move to table to the next meeting?
Certainly to the next meeting is appropriate, I think. Maybe it'll go beyond, but we'll bring it up, so. Is there a second?
Okay.
Yeah, a second, uh.
Uh, any other discussion? Nope. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
John, thanks.
That's fine. So it'll go ahead, do we have a date it would go ahead to? Two meetings out?
When is our next meeting, Tracy?
December ninth.
December ninth. I mean, we will look for the.
Original petition.
But you'd have to advertise, so, yep.
Really?
We need more days.
So, we'd need more time.
Is it, what do we need, fourteen days?
It's two weeks, I think.
Two weeks.
Then, uh, we'll, we'll table it at least for, uh, how quick are they trying to move in?
Yesterday.
Well, they've already dealt with our system and our delays for us, so that's not your responsibility, but.
And this is gonna be, is this a new Newbury resident, or is this a Raleigh resident?
No, it's a Newbury resident, and the company won't allow it to be served from Raleigh. It gets into tariffs and things, so I have to serve it. Raleigh agreed to serve, but the company legal wouldn't, uh.
Goodness sakes.
Wouldn't, didn't give me, didn't let me off the hook. So. Uh, my question, I guess, would be, you're gonna look for your original petitions.
Yep. We're gonna wait for more information from you.
And the town would like a copy of our agreement with Bay Ring.
And town council would review it, so we could definitely table it to next meeting, like the motion's been made to discuss it again, and maybe set a, a date for a public hearing, couldn't we?
Public hearing would then have to be in January.
Yeah.
It's gotta be advertised two weeks.
Well. Can we set the date for a public hearing now?
To hear the petition?
You're not, yeah, not, I'm, I'm not thinking of setting it, um, after we talk about it next week.
Set it now.
Set it now.
Set it now.
And we can still talk about whatever we've learned informationally next week, but we should probably set the date for a public hearing.
Right now.
Tuesday, twenty-third?
December twenty-third.
December twenty-third.
December twenty-third.
Alright, so I entertain a motion for a public hearing on this issue before us, uh, from, from the board.
So moved.
So, December twenty-third?
At what time?
Seven PM.
Seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen, sounds good. Uh, any more feedback, Michael?
Yeah.
Alright, wanna, wanna make the full motion again, Chuck, so we can get a second?
Um, move that we have a public hearing on December twenty-third, seven o'clock, for.
Make it seven fifteen, seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen, so, so sorry.
Yep, yep. Nope, not you, not you. Not you, go ahead.
Second.
Uh, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I feel bad for not moving so fast, but.
No, that's understood.
Should've come to us a while ago.
Understood, yeah. Uh, the other, my only other question is, then you'd require the company to be present on the ninth as well, or?
Hey, ring, you mean?
National Grid.
National Grid.
Okay.
You know what? Why don't we wait to see what we get into? Town council can take a peek at this, we'll have more information. You're gonna be in contact with at least town administrator for town council if they have any questions. And if that seems to be the case, we'll ask you to come for more information.
Okay, in the meantime, my contact is with town administrator.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Moving, moving right along. This meeting is just a box of chocolates, so. Uh, new business.
No, next public hearing.
We have that public hearing.
Oh, yeah. We, we could've forgot that one, right? Uh, seven thirty, we have another public hearing. Is there a legal notice on this one?
It's a continuance.
Just open, okay.
Continuation.
Do I, do I hear a motion from the board to open a public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, um. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Um. I have before me, which would be a written request, which would be a written request for a continuance. And I'll read it. I would also like to request a continuance for one thirty-six Main Street, which would be the U.S.A.R. project to the Board of Selectmen's December meeting, okay? Um, obviously, that's a little too quick for us. Lisa Mead wasn't available and everything else, so we put together a timetable, and I guess there's been subsequent, uh, communication between Borrego. And we will take and have a motion to continue it to January twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen, at seven thirty PM.
Um, before we do that, didn't we also have a communication about an easement that we were gonna discuss today? Wasn't that the letter from KAVI? That he said we couldn't discuss until the public hearing?
We can't discuss it until everyone's here for the public hearing. This, this public hearing's gonna be continued, so.
Okay, I wasn't sure if we could discuss it, so they could start, the lawyers could start talking.
It was, uh, town, uh, Lisa Mead, town council, recommended that we not discuss it until everyone was properly notified in that, in attendance at the hearing.
Well, alright then.
Oh.
Sorry?
Don't worry, do I have a motion?
As I, yeah, move that we.
January twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen, second?
July fifteenth.
What did I say?
Fifteen.
That's right. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm reading it, it says two thousand, I keep reading it, I'll read it again, watch me. Then on January twenty-seventh, two thousand fifteen, at seven thirty PM, so second, any discussion?
Nope.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Want a clarification? Is that a request from Borrego?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Did they give a reason for that?
Steve, on, um, not in the written request, there was no.
Do you know the reason why?
No.
They didn't give one.
Thank you.
Look.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, could we take Linda McCamick's appointment out of order? She has another commitment to attend.
I'm gonna have trouble finding with all this paper that request. Hi, Linda. So to make a long story short, until I find this, um. Let me know if you find it.
The letter?
Yeah. There will be, uh, the Board of Assessors what, has been operating with one person less than it's needed, and it has become, uh, known to.
It's right here.
Good. And that's in before. So, Bud, this is from you, right? So I can read this letter from, alright, so from Bud Kelly, Chairman of the Board of Assessors, um, and everyone else involved in the Board of Assessors. This letter, or memo, is to the Board of Selectmen from the Board of Assessors. And Linda McCamick, who is here to, has re, has expressed her willingness to serve on the Board of Assessors, and we were kind of waiting for Bud's board to kind of meet her and recommend her, and this has been done. The Newbury Board of Assessors met with Linda McCamick last Tuesday, November eighteenth, two thousand fourteen. Upon reviewing Linda's background and knowledge of the town of Newbury, we are pleased to recommend that Linda McCamick be a part of the board by the Board of Selectmen to the current open that we have on the board, so. And they've asked for this appointment on this date, which is November, uh, twenty-fifth, so I would, uh, entertain a motion for that to be done.
Motion to approve, uh, Linda McCamick to Board of Assessors.
Okay. Uh, any discussion?
I have a second.
Okay, uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Linda, and this is Linda right here.
Alright.
We didn't even ask you to get up, you see.
Thank you, Sandy. Want to get up? See you next time.
Yes. Happy Thanksgiving. Alright. So, under new business, we have a request from the trustees of reservations for the approval of amended and reinstated conservation restriction at two eighty High Road.
Which was a very long document.
Good evening. Uh, my name's David Outman, here tonight representing the trustees of reservations, and, uh, as you said, seeking the board's approval for an amended and restated conservation restriction at two eighty High Road. Uh, I, uh, I hope that the board has, uh, the draft of the restriction in front of them, as well as the cover letter. I do have some additional information I'd like to provide. I think there's enough copies for each member. What you'll find in, in that package is a letter from the landowner. Regret, regretfully, uh, the landowners were not able to attend tonight. They did, however, provide a letter. Uh, also in there is, um, a larger scale copy of the, uh, recently prepared plan of, of the property, of the parcel, showing where the restriction, uh, will be located on the parcel, as well as, uh, as, as an image, to just give you a sense of, um, of the property in question, uh, or the subject area of the conservation restriction. So.
Before you head into that, and I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, please.
Meaning amended and reinstated. Is the amendment what caused it to be reinstated, and I'm just kind of, the history?
Yes, absolutely. So that, that term amended and reinstated is just, it's the kind of nomenclature that's used by the state. It's, we're calling it an amended and reinstated conservation restriction, because uh, there was originally a gift of a conservation restriction, uh, by the previous owner, Mr. Robert Barton, of that property, donated a conservation restriction to the trustees of reservations in nineteen ninety-eight. Uh, and essentially, that conservation restriction is what's before you. Not exactly, but essentially, uh, the terms are all the same. So, uh, what we're asking, however, at the time, um, that restriction was not formally approved by this body, or your predecessors, the town, uh, Board of Selectmen of Newbury, as well as the state. And by statute, uh, permanent conservation restrictions under, uh, chapter one eighty-two must be approved, uh, by both the town and the state. So essentially, even though the restriction that was granted in nineteen ninety-eight is essentially what you're looking at today, without those approvals, it's functioning as what, what would be called a deed restriction. So it's really has a thirty-year term, um, with provisions that the trustees could, uh, in twenty-year increments, uh, kind of renew that restriction. And really, what we're seeking to do tonight, um, is to bring this restriction under chapter one eighty-two and make it a perpetual restriction without these qualifications and having to go back in thirty-year and twenty-year increments.
Now, I, I have no problem with the conservation easement, but sometimes language seems to baffle me. Just out of curiosity, um, when these, when the approvals were not obtained from the town and the state, was it that they were not obtained because they were turned down? They never came before the state? I mean, just a little elaboration on that, doesn't have anything to do with how we're gonna look at it, I'm just curious.
Understood.
In case I get asked.
Um, so nineteen ninety-eight was before my time with the trustees, so I am working from the file, and as best that I can understand, is it really had to do with time constraints, the time, the gift? Um, and this gets a little complicated, but the property was gifted to benefit the trustees, so that we could then, um, restrict and sell the property with the proceeds of the sale of the property, and that sale was to the current owner, who's now granting this amended restriction. The proceeds from the sale of the property were used to create, uh, a charitable unit trust that's to the benefit, um, at the time of Mr. Barton, as well as, um. And so, this restriction was part of a broader, um, conservation effort that had timelines with kind of estate planning, and as I, and and again, this is before my time, but as I understand it, the other beneficiary of that charitable remainder trust was, um, elderly, and there was health questions, so it was really, uh, a timing, an issue of timing, to, to, to my knowledge.
Now, Tracy, uh, town council has looked at this, and we can't get ourselves in any complications, everything is straight forward.
She's approved the language as presented.
Then I'm good. Alright, Dave.
Um, well, that's, I would, um, if, if the board would like, I could read this letter from the, from the landowners. I don't want to make this any, um, you know, if there are any other questions, or I don't know if the board is familiar with conservation restrictions, I could provide a little overview of, of what the restriction is, kind of the purposes, at least the meat of the document, if that would be helpful, um.
Set down by you, Jeff, two eighty?
No, I mean, um, without having a map here, let us refresh.
That's right, the, the base of the lower green.
I mean, it's, it's the old store Humphrey House that's at the base of the green, and it's that piece that goes back out, they used to have the old house that overlooked right on the river there, right?
It's the five-acre field, yeah, that's the backside of that. It's not the entire parcel.
And it runs along the river?
Yes, so the southern boundary of that runs, there's actually another parcel of land between the river and that property, but it, that's essentially marsh.
Okay, which, yeah. Okay, actually, we've got a map in here, Chuck, too. Um. And the, and the deed's already been restricted at the time that this occurred, and all those other details, so. Um, why don't you read the letter, and then the board has time to think about it, Dave?
Absolutely. Uh, dear Town of Newbury Board of Selectmen, we are very pleased to provide the opportunity to approve a permanent protection status for our property at two eighty High Road in Newbury. When we bought our home fifteen years ago, it was through a very generous gift to the trustees of reservations by Robert Barton. At that time, Mr. Barton placed the beautiful field portion of the property under conservation restriction with the directive that the restriction be made permanent. The field is adjacent to the town's historic Lower Green and Green Belt Conservation Land, and is further bordered by the Parker River and Old Town Hill. The property, established by the Plummer family, has been farmed for over two hundred years, as, and is part of a scenic byway and history that makes Newbury and New England in general the special place that it is. The field is home to deer, woodcock, indigo buntings, rabbit, hawks, the occasional honeybee, and many other species. In addition to hay, wildflowers and milkweed, essential for mono, butterflies are also sprout. We ask that you approve our request to make the restriction permanent, to help preserve a very special part of Newbury's natural beauty, history, and heritage. With our thanks for your support, uh, appreciation and preservation of Newbury's heritage, Adele Paulus and Robert Menacoche.
Alright, so the, uh, request is actually coming from a, a Newbury resident?
Yes, well, jointly. The request is working together. They are the ones who are the granters of the conservation restrictions. We are the ones
Right.
that will be holding the restriction.
But I mean, they're initiating.
They, uh, they did, yes.
Right.
So this property stays private?
Let's make a motion, and then we'll, uh, discuss.
Uh, motion to approve.
Second.
Alright, now, any discussion?
Wanna go ahead?
Oh, you start it, go.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Um, so this property stays private?
That's correct.
It's not public property, nobody has access? Okay, if the homeowner, the property owner so desired, is their hunting allowed on this property, or does your restriction stop that?
The restriction, I believe, we, we didn't fundamentally change the terms of the restriction. and the restriction is quiet to hunting, which means that it is in the, it's a land, it would be a landowner decision.
Okay. I'm done.
All right, so, yeah, Mike, I think you may have answered my question inadvertently, which was, how has the restriction changed from the initial gift to the document that we read today? Or I've read today, I don't know.
That's a good question. I would say the primary changes, aside from the legal, some of the, you know, just sprucing it up to what are the current standards around legal language in the restriction. Terms of the meat, the terms of the restriction, I would say the most significant changes are related to agriculture and providing additional provisions for that field to be maintained in active agricultural use. So, for example, one of the purposes of the restriction, that field is entirely prime agricul, has, is prime agricultural soils. And agriculture was a permitted use in the original restriction. To help clarify and support that for future owners, we've included a provision for providing well, if they so desired. Water being a key element for agriculture. So that was something that was not included in the original restriction, but to help support the agricultural purpose, we included a provision for water.
Wasn't septic also in that?
So the septic was, there was both, there was an amendment, kind of a previous amendment that wasn't formally, again, done more like the restriction for septic system to be allowed, provided that there was no other alternative, feasible alternative, within the unrestricted portion. And that's all the land, that's over an acre up by the road. So there is that provision. Another, for example, another difference is stone walls. So stone walls being a part of the cultural landscape, providing, the previous restriction, stone walls are protected from removal or destruction. We put in a clarifying provision that would allow the landowner to maintain them and clear them. And so, just kind of minor tweaks that we think are additions, that are improvements to the restriction, given that we're taking this opportunity to amend and update it.
I know that, I think there were some people here that would, you know... Anyone wanna speak on this? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against it? So, Lon, are you here? No?
I would, I appreciate, yes, there are folks here tonight in support.
We all support it.
Good.
If you're here, but if you'd like to hear from us, you can.
Well, I think Joe, he's here to support it, yeah. I mean, give us, give us some, please, some idea, it always helps.
Lon Hackmeister, two eighty-one High Road. Well, I live right across from, I'm two eighty-one High Road, that's two eighty. And of course, we're co-chairmen here of the Save the Lower Green, buying that piece of property from Dr. Hermione, and preserving that, getting it turned over to Green Belt. So, we weren't able to save the two pieces up on Newman Road, the two lots up there, so there's houses there. But right now, we've got the open field for Green Belt. If we can save Adele and Bob's place and not have that developed any time in the future, and that wetland down here, it's, it becomes a nice piece of property. And it does surround the Lower Green, and it's been like this for, you know, at least mid eighteen hundreds. We've got a photograph from then. But, so we'd sure like, my wife and I, she wanted to get up here then, we'd like to see it approved.
I think that's one of the important things that you just said, that it's been like that for a very long time. So, any more discussion?
Martha, you've looked this over?
I've looked it over briefly, not in as much detail.
You're okay.
I have one question, if I may. Has the state reviewed this?
Yes, this is, the state, Irene Delbono, the state, has reviewed and approved. Of course, pending town's approval, she's, but yes, reviewed and approved.
So you're all set, okay.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, I don't see anything in the additions that were mentioned to stop it. I think it's a good thing for the town, so...
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Oh, if I might, just one, so with the approval, with the vote, we would like, we do need to have the restriction signed.
Okay.
And I understand, the signatures do need to be notarized. I understand that that will be done tomorrow. I ask that you use this particular signature page simply because we separated one of the previous ones to the pagination on the document that you have as different.
Linda's already been appointed as new business, and we're now heading, we need to set the time for the February tenth, two thousand fifteen special election, which would be eight AM to eight PM.
So moved.
Just a motion. So, someone should make that motion that I just read.
I move that we set the time for the February tenth, two thousand fifteen special election from eight AM to eight PM.
Second motion.
Any discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We have some correspondence that has come to, and it's correspondence that is quite varied. So, let me read some of it, I thought it was interesting. Especially this one, kind of caught my, and we don't need any motions, but it's for public knowledge, and maybe, I'm sure Tim's already been sent this, it's been CC'd to him, so... But, Dear Chairman Walker, the application of roll salt on highway and railway crossings can cause train approach warnings to activate without the presence of a train in the area. The reason for this is the combination of roll salt and fresh or melting snow creates a conductive solution that causes a short circuit between the rails and the tracks. As a result, the gates lower, the lights flash, and the warning bells ring. Until the problem is corrected, the corrosive action actually takes, the corrective action usually takes an hour or more and can cause highway traffic to back up. So, this has already been CC'd down to Timmy, and I mean, we've probably not done this before, because it's probably not the first time we've seen this. Does anyone know, Tracy, have we received a letter like this at all before?
It's the first one I've seen.
All right, but it's been CC'd to Tracy, I mean, down to Timmy, so...
Yes.
You know, we'll do our best to...
Not salt the tracks.
Right, so not salt the tracks from nasty OT rail and transit division. So, we have a little something from Comcast, and if everyone got a chance to read it, it's what usually happens, I guess, with Comcast in situations like this. We are committed to constantly improving our customers' entertainment and communications experience in their community. We continue to invest in making the services even better. As we make these and other investments, we periodically need to adjust the prices we incur to programming and other business costs. Starting December twentieth, two thousand fourteen, new prices will apply to select infinity TV and internet services and equipment as reflected in the includes notices, and they go through it. And it seems, none of these seem to be huge, but it's another dollar here, dollar there. And as I was reading this communication, I got to think, what if the town says no? Has towns ever decided to ever say no? Don't raise your prices in that town?
I think it's a provision in the contract document. It's been forwarded on to the media committee.
So, this has, so, but anyway...
Don't have the option of telling them to keep the prices down?
Let's do some research, how's that? We'll think about it, all right?
I'd like to bring it out to my house.
I don't know on that right now, the way mine's been operating the last two weeks.
Well, you can, you can, you can, we can certainly send them how we feel about it, so... What do you wanna do? Should we just let it go before it causes another little hornet's nest, or? Do you wanna send them a note? Oh, Joseph.
Just, if you take a chance, there are a couple people in town that are at the end of the street, and Comcast won't run the line one more hole to hook them in with a pretty high T, okay? And it might be George Blanchett over on, what street is that he lives on?
Spring Hill Road.
Okay, and he's one person that's been trying for years, and Comcast wants a lot of money to run one more thing. It might be a good thing if you send them back, say, okay, would you look into this, you know?
Good point.
I don't have any problem with that. What's the other one? Did you say there were two, do you know of another one?
Susan Neuss.
Right.
Wow, that's...
Why don't we, why don't we become a little recalcitrant, and, I mean, I know Tracy's looking at me like I got four eyes.
No, no.
Why don't we do this?
Kick it over to the media committee?
No, yeah, we can kick it over to the media committee, we can wait for what they say. But we could also, you know, write a letter from the Board of Selectmen requesting that they be very critical about how they raise prices in these days and times. I know they're always making their products better than anyone else. And we can ask them if they would look into some of the issues that people have with extending their service.
Yeah, they're raising prices, they should extend those lines without undue burden on those people at the end of the line.
If, you know, at least we'll get an answer, so, is that a motion?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
You let Ellen know, and we'll get something up, and I'll look at it.
In your spare time.
Thanks. I can remember, I asked you to do something once years ago, remember the planning board? All right. This one is from a Grace Oars Camp. It's to the Newbury Board of Selectmen. It is a letter that has the subject to support solar energy in Massachusetts. To the Newbury Board of Selectmen, the deadline to sign on to the environmental Massachusetts letter in support of solar energy is coming up soon. Can we add your name to our letter? Already elected officials from eighty-three towns across Massachusetts have signed on to this letter. Included the mayor of Springfield, the mayor of Medford, on and on Gloucester and Havel. As Governor-elect Charlie Baker takes office, we are urging him to continue Massachusetts' record of solar leadership and set an ambitious goal of twenty percent solar by two thousand twenty-five. It is important for him to hear the strong message of support from solar, from solar from local leaders, and why we're asking you to add your name to this letter. Now, this person is Great Grace Olzcom from the Environmental Massachusetts, two hundred Washington Street. My only question is, if Tracy or someone else got to read this, or Damon, when you were looking at it, or anyone else, I'm not sure who that exactly is. So before I sign a letter, I'd like, or at least unless you got, you can make a motion to sign it, I'm just not sure who that is. Nothing against solar.
I did not look, I read the letter, but I didn't think to look up the group that was behind it, 'cause the letter seems fairly benign.
Yeah, yeah. But, and the board can do, it's up to the board to make a motion right now to do anything, but I just didn't know who, if anyone in Newbury that was.
Who the group was. So we can have discussion, huh? But I move that we add our list to the signatories, our name, the town to the signatories on the letter.
Right. And just bef, and second on that motion?
Sure.
And just so everyone knows, or, you know, in the audience and on TV, the letter does say, as local and state civic leaders, we encourage you to make solar energy a key element of Massachusetts' energy focus. And it goes on to talk about businesses and homes, and how Massachusetts has tried to reach certain goals, and how it protects and saves, and also decreases pollution. So, once again, it's kind of a benign letter. My only thought was, I'm really not sure who this is, so... But whatever the board would like to do, it's up to, it's up to you guys as far as discussing right now what you'd like to do.
I move we table it till after the first year.
How quickly do they need it? What did they say? Hold on, Mike, and... All right, Mike's made a motion.
Well, there was a motion on the table, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
So we gotta deal with that one for...
What was the motion on the table?
The motion was to sign the letter.
All right, and that was seconded.
So, I think rather than tabling it, perhaps what we should do is, and I'd volunteer to do this, do some research on this group, and make the motion contingent upon finding nothing important in the proposing group.
Or, and I, you know, or just for the sake of discussion, wait a minute, our deadline to sign the letter, I knew I read that in there, is November twenty-sixth. I knew I read that somewhere. All right, the deadline to sign this letter is basically tomorrow, so...
Load it down.
I'll load it down.
Well, make a motion.
It is. No motion on the table right now.
The motion on, so the motion on the table was to sign it.
Yeah, that's correct.
All right, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'm opposed.
All those opposed?
Yep.
I am too, 'cause I don't know who it is.
Okay.
There's...
I've got their website up there. Statewide Citizen-Based Environmental Advocacy Organization, funded by supporters like you.
What else does it say, Tracy, anything?
Where your state environmental group, protecting the places we love, advancing the environmental values we share, and winning real results for our environment.
I think if, this is so important, they should get their information to us in a more timely manner. You know, it's due tomorrow, no? It's due on December twentieth, and none of us are familiar with it yet. And, and we can't act on it.
Well, the only thing is, where they need signatures quickly, and Tracy has found out that it's just an environmental advocacy group, and the letter is benign, we might take and think about this, you know, a little more again, Mike. Joe, did I see your hand go up out there?
No, I just scratched my hand.
I would more use, and if it's a benign letter, and it's not, doesn't hinge on anything, I don't think we should support it, the way it's presented to us now.
Well, the motion we just made was not to sign it. The three of us loaded it down, so we'll let it go. All right? Now, this is to do with some of our bridges. The first bridge is the Middle Road Bridge, and this is communication. I am responding to Foreman James Saretz's letter dated November fifth, two thousand fourteen, regarding dislodge granite and concrete blocks from the embankment underneath the above- referenced town-owned bridge, requesting a inspection of the bridge. This is from a Paul D. Stidman, Acting District Fourteen Highway Director. So, he went out, and he examined the bridge, and he inspected the bridge, and this is what he wrote back to us, which was good news. The bridge was built in nineteen ninety-five. The bridge is structurally independent and is supported on concrete-filled steel pipe piles. They are embedded in bedrock below. There was also a note on the bridge plans that the old masonry abutments and wing walls, which are non-structural, were to remain. These old blocks have now dislodged from the embankment. Our inspectors after inspecting the bridge discussed their findings with district bridge engineer, and it was concluded the bridge is safe and can be safely reopened for vehicle traffic. So that was good news.
Do we know how deep the bridge is there? I know a lot of boaters go through there. And I don't know how many of those blocks stumbled in, but somebody could get a very rude awakening next spring when they're out on their boat, tooling up the river. I don't know if that's something we can ask the harbor master to check, or...
I mean, I don't think that's a bad request. That area, have you actually gone up much under there?
Yeah, I used to go all the way up to Detroit.
Because it's, when you're going under that bridge at anything, I mean, high tide, you got trouble.
Yeah, you're too, you're gonna hit your boat off the bridge.
You're not getting under. And medium tide, and anything below that, you're capital as heck anyway, just because of it, so... because of, so.
Even the RV team to be in the way, who's the owners to remove them?
No, not to remove them, just to let people, have the harbor master maybe put a mark out, you know, just something so that people who've been going through it for years don't come across a large piece of concrete where there wasn't one before.
And I don't think that's a, a bad idea. When we make transit on that bridge next spring, you know, maybe you and I will even go up and take a look. All right, I don't have a problem with that, that's a, that's a good request. Next, it's a night for bridges, bridges and public meetings. So, the next is the Main Street Bridge over the Parker River. This is a letter back to Timmy from the same person, Acting District Four Highway Director, and it is, "Dear Mr. Leonard," and then I'm gonna ask some of the questions we need to know about some of the surveying we had done and everything else. "So I am responding to your letter dated October first, two thousand fourteen, requesting Mass DOT to inspect the above referenced bridge that is owned and maintained by the town of Newby. The subject bridge was inspected on October seventeenth, two thousand fourteen. Attach please find the inspection report." And if you go through the report, it certainly recognizes some, some inadequacies that the bridge has right now. "As a result of this inspection, item fifty-nine superstructure has now been coded as four. The bridge has therefore become structurally deficient, which requires us to inspect this bridge every twelve months." Now, as I understand that, they have to inspect it every twelve months, but we can still go over it, right?
Mm-hmm.
So that, I mean, it could be worse.
Could be a lot worse.
Could be worse.
That's a main thorough affair through there.
Could be worse. "Please be advised that it is the responsibility of the concerned municipality to address all the deficiencies that are listed in the inspection report." Now, do we know, Chuck, Tracy, did we have someone do some, we own the bridge.
Yes, we do.
We absolutely own the bridge right now.
Absolutely, yep.
So, as of now, they're inspecting it and this is just correspondence for our notification. They're inspecting the bridge every twelve months and we can still use it. Any questions? Any questions from anyone else?
When do we propose to address all of the things that are listed in the inspection report as being deficient?
When it fails the twelve-month inspection.
Well, we have a plan. I mean, I thought we had some plans and talk about.
Committee actually looking into that right now, the Byfield Village Committee. We're looking into not only the bridge, but the outflow pipe, the drainage, the roads, the infrastructure. So, yeah, we're, we're on top of it, looking into it.
Has Timmy, when he looked at that, Chuck, did further scrutiny of the report? I mean, is there a road plan as to how to fix it? Has anyone talked about what it's really gonna need?
Yes, we've had a couple of our own engineers that we've hired to go down and give us a plan on how to fix this. Some of it is from sheet piles to, because the, is undermined under some of the road sides, not badly, but it is undermining, it's only gonna get worse. One of the concrete I-beams underneath there is eroding, that needs to be done, and the guardrails, so you can just push them right over. So those need to be addressed also. I believe SPS has looked at it and I believe that we have, one of the companies has looked at it, I cannot say the name right now. Timmy had them.
Can you remember?
Oh, it's Stein Hudson, is that who it was?
Yes, and they had, they had an independent structural engineer table it as well.
Were they asking for total replacement or repair? Does anyone remember?
We were looking into repair right now because the outflow pipe, I think, is part of the cause of this issue.
Yep. So, some work is being done to answer everyone's question, Damon, to answer your question, so it's good.
My major concern with that bridge was, in the river itself, did it go under the concrete? It's not a full culvert, in other words, a concrete floor. It is a riverbed there and it could go underneath there. That was my concern and why I wanted to.
So in other words, it's not like a big round culvert?
No, it is a square with.
Was it a box?
Cast concrete I-beams that were poured nineteen, oh, one, I think.
Wasn't a box culvert, it's, it's a bridge with a river bar.
It is a bridge, yes. It's not long enough to be classified as a full bridge.
Yep. All right. Has everyone looked at the minutes? I was here, Chuck Fia was here, Mike was here, and Damon was here.
Except the minutes is red, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Do we have warrants to sign before we run out of here or anything?
Yes.
Martha?
Oh. I've got something.
From both directions, so we'll, we'll go along. Any meeting updates?
Yeah, I have one from the group out on Plum Island.
Yep.
So.
You have two, you just don't know it yet.
I have two. I have a question for everyone to make something three. So, give me just a second to find the right email from her. So, people came from Concord, New Hampshire, Phillips Exeter Academy, Newbury, Newport, Byfield, and Georgetown to help with the dune restoration.
Yep.
There were four thousand plants planted, eight hundred were seaside goldenrod, and the remaining three thousand two hundred were beach grass. There were six hundred linear feet of fence installed and seventy-two volunteers contributing to the project.
And, and kind of refresh everyone's, remember that it was Greg Moore's project, UNH and CZM's, you know.
Yes.
Great.
And, and the town has worked in total concert with the whole project and it's only a part of it. There's going to, it's gonna be ongoing through most of next.
Next year.
Summer season, so. The other thing that Damon, you could talk about a little bit, is we had a public workshop for the municipal building.
Oh, yes.
So you can discuss that, will you?
There was, the Municipal Building Committee held a public workshop on the proposed new police station and town hall. It was lightly attended, but.
And everyone on TV was watching.
But the presentation, when well is online, I think the audio will be a lot better so that more people can get the information about what is being proposed and there were tours of the police station done. And so, I think we're moving in the right direction. We do need to get a lot more public involvement, I think, in the discussion, which, some of which is incumbent upon us and hopefully we can get more interest and involvement before the next town meeting. But speaking to that, I talked with Tracy, I think after that meeting, about talking to the people at JR&amp;M, which is one of the north Route One sites, and I wasn't sure if any of the other selectmen had a relationship with the owners of that property, because that's one of the sites that is being contemplated.
The owner of JR&amp;M or the owner of the land?
Of the land where JR&amp;M is.
Tommy Bashar, right?
No.
I know, that one.
It's James Motzkin and Bison Realty Trust.
That was, he, he was able to segregate that when that wholesale entered.
Okay, that you want us to sign.
Tommy doesn't own that, right, Martha? That's owned by, that's owned by JR.
It's this lot right here.
All right.
So.
And he was interested at one time in having something to do, you know, either sale or he was gonna open a larger business, so there's been some.
Is this all of this or just?
Conversation about that property, so.
Uh-huh, okay.
You know, maybe speaking with him might not be a bad idea at all. Damon, what were you gonna say as relevance to that?
Well, I wasn't sure if any, I don't know him personally and so if one of us had a personal relationship with James, then I would think, having, asking the board to speak to him on our behalf would make sense, otherwise I was gonna ask that we authorize or ask Tracy to, to see if he's interested in selling that piece of property as a potential site for the new town hall.
Yeah, I believe the Sun is now running it, right? Jack, when Motzkin is out, that was the JR&amp;M, I knew him, but I do not know the Sun.
If we were gonna do that.
Mm-hmm.
Tracy, is there a mechanism that would be able to contact most of the landowners on that section to see if they had any interest in selling their property for, you know, is there a way we could mail them?
Sure.
I mean, it might be good to get it all done at once. So, I mean, there's quite a few different little parcels there.
I'll, I can work with Michelle and get me the addresses and send out some correspondence.
It gives a person a chance to open it up and look at it in kind of private before someone walks up to them, might be good to give someone a chance to look at it.
Okay.
And I think Damon was definitely right. One of the things that was most significant about the meeting, it was, it was run very succinctly, this is the building and municipal discussion about a new.
The public workshop.
The new police station. And certainly it needed to be really illuminated on, you know, TV for everyone to see and certainly it was the beginning of everyone understanding because they could hear this one, they couldn't hear the one in the library. We really probably shouldn't use the library anymore because we can't seem to get the right kind of sound capabilities out of the library, so that was a, a real good meeting for people. It'll, it'll play over and over and over again and people will definitely, definitely hear it, so. Is there any other meeting updates?
I have one more thing that I just got from Sam. I'd ask Sam for clarification about those new one-day liquor license forms and so I'd just like to read his response.
Is that anything to do with what your questions were?
Yes.
For the unchecked one, maybe, you know, explain that a little bit so people understand.
So it's a previous meeting, we had had a request for a one-day liquor license from Fire Two and there were some parts of the form that had not been completed and we weren't sure if they were required, so I, I wrote Sam about how we were supposed to be using the new form and, and his response was, "All signatures, fire department, police department, board of health, building, and treasury are required on a completed application, which includes the description of the floor plan and all information listed under required information need to be submitted at least twenty-one days prior to the event to the selectman's secretary to be reviewed to ensure all info is submitted. Applications will be put on the agenda for the selectmen to approve or not." So he's saying, for the forms, it need, everyone's signature needs to be there. So, if they don't have a tent or anything, Sam will sign it and say, "They don't have a tent, they don't need anything more from me." But he has to see it so that he can say, "They don't need anything from me." And, and so the intent of the form is that those departments which might be involved in an event have had a chance to look at it and see where their involvement lies, so.
And it wouldn't get to the selectmen's agenda until those signatures are on it.
Okay. And my only question would be, where does it come in twenty-one days? Is that what it is needed? Why is it twenty-one days? Is that on the form anywhere? Can you remember?
I'd have to look at it again.
Yeah, you can't remember. Damon, do me a favor, look on the form, see if it's twenty-one days on the form and if it's not twenty-one days on the form, can you ask Sam?
I can break Sam.
As why twenty-one, you know, what it, what it means is, someone could get a request in a shorter period than twenty-one days and it might take and stop that person from being able to move that request forward because of the twenty-one days in advance and I didn't know if that was on the form.
Yeah, look at the form and see if it's in there.
We can do that and just, it's not anything that has to be answered tonight. Yeah, it doesn't have to be answered. All right, so, any other meeting updates? Chuck, anything? Anything, Michael?
No.
Executive session, seeing none, guess what I would ask for?
Motion to adjourn, chairman.
Everyone's really ready. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.